Call to order. This is the code committee meeting for the common council of the city of Lawrence. It is July the 17th, 2024, and it is roughly 12:35, 37, I'm sorry. Why 37, I'm sorry. We have, oh, we can do the pledge of allegiance. Everybody rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have all members present for the meeting other than one. Do we have enough for a quorum? There is no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business, which is number A, proposal number nine, 2024. And it's an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence municipal code to establish and always stop intersections at Highview Court and Winding Creek Place, Pine Grove Court and Winding Ridge Drive, and West Ridge Circle and Winding Ridge, uh, place, Winding Ridge Creek Place, I'm sorry. So the sponsor of this is here. Could, yes, could you give us some insight on this, please?
Yes, thank you so much. So I had a constituent reach out to me earlier this year. He was hoping I would support him in, he was hoping to get the stop sign at his intersection changed to a yield sign to match some of the other yield signs in the neighborhood. The neighborhood is Bradford Creek. It's like 79th and Carroll. So we talked, had some emails back and forth. I went, drove it, found out what he was talking about, kind of did a little survey on my own. Most of the streets in his neighborhood is like in a horseshoe, and then you have all of these little offshoot cul-de-sacs. And many of them have, well, some have yields, some have stop signs. So then when I took it back to deputy chief of staff level, how do we proceed forward with this? Who do I need to contact? And I was told contact police and the fire did the due diligence. Information came back from fire, or I'm sorry, from police saying, actually, it's a better idea to have all the yield signs be stop signs ultimately. We would like to leave that one specifically a stop sign. We don't want to change it to a yield. More than anything, it was, it was safety. Recommended intersections in the neighborhood have stop signs to address safety concerns posed by drivers who may roll through intersections without properly yielding. Stop signs would encourage drivers to come to a complete stop at all intersections and reduce the risk of accidents and improving overall safety of the neighborhood. So with that knowledge, I went back to the constituent, told him the findings, said, sorry, but this is a better, you know, it's better for you to keep the stop sign, and these are the reasons why. So then he sat on it for a few days and came back to me and was, and said, hey, overall safety of the neighborhood, why don't we just have, you know, can I make a request to have our entire neighborhood in compliance? Let's go down that route. So came back and here we are. So there are, his neighborhood, or his intersection stays the same, but then there are three other intersections that are listed in this that are currently yields that we would like to have changed to stop signs for safety.
And this was the recommendation of our police department that, you know, Mr. Cantrell, would you, Officer Cantrell, would you please give us your insight, please?
So I'm the, good afternoon to everyone up here.
Good afternoon.
I am the individual who did the survey with council over here, and that was the recommendation that I came up with just due to the fact of when you have in cul-de-sacs and neighborhoods like that, the yield signs, the problem with that is a vehicle won't stop, but there, there's a crosswalk. So if someone's walking, that vehicle is not going to stop, potentially wouldn't stop if they're not paying attention because they don't have to if they don't see other vehicles coming. So they're looking at opposite directions. So it's more feasible to have stop signs. That way people physically stop, so it just reduces the, you know, incidents or any potential accidents that could occur at those intersections in that neighborhood.
Okay. Do we have any idea at these three intersections, what, if any accidents have been reported there in the last?
There hasn't been, maybe one or two over the years, but it's nothing that's, something that's reoccurring, but it could, to change the existing ones that are stop signs to yield signs the way they initially wanted it. That just grows to where it could potentially have at first effects when it comes to people that walk with their dogs, walk with their kids, or kids out playing, so.
Okay. What, and this may be a question more for the counselor, is there, is there not a neighborhood association for this neighborhood?
That I wouldn't know, sir.
I don't know.
I can't, I'm.
It's never been mentioned in any of the correspondence I had with him.
So it's a, is there, I guess another question would be, are we doing this for the sake of one resident, or are there, or is there more than one resident that's interested in seeing these signs, all three of these signs in all three of these different locations, or?
He's, he's wanting to do this to get his whole neighborhood in compliance. That's, that's how he phrased it to me.
Okay. So there isn't a?
There's not an HOA backing on this.
Okay.
Because I don't know if there's an HOA. This was just a private citizen that contacted me.
Just one. Well, I guess my only concern is, do we go out and change, I mean, Officer Cantrell, you're thinking this is a good idea that just needs to be done for this particular area?
Yes. If it's brought to someone's attention, whether it be one person or entire neighborhood, that means that there's obviously a concern that this individual sees.
Right.
When switching either or. So other neighborhoods have not contacted any of their council people in their area for this same concern, but potentially, how that usually works is when a child gets hit or when there's major accidents, then that's when it's addressed with the council person in that district, and then this is where we are today. So I think this is just someone that's trying to be proactive.
Sure.
To make sure and mitigate any of potential issues that could potentially come up from that.
I understand. Hey, well, I just don't want to see this council changing, you know, all of our street structure just because we're, you know, we're trying to appease one, you know, one citizen.
Yes, sir.
Understood.
So we don't have anybody in the audience that lives in this district and?
I told him that this meeting was happening, and I told him it was being presented at the last meeting, and he was more than welcome to show up, but he has not. So he, he knows that this is.
You knew this was going to happen.
Yeah. I don't know what his work schedule is either.
Well, honestly, I'm a little reluctant, but based on Officer Cantrell's, on his advice, then I think that, you know, you think it's a good idea that it needs to be, then I say we put it to a vote. So anyway, I will, if anybody have any else thing they want to ask, add to it, questions, comments?
I do appreciate your concern about, you know, well, I don't want the council to, you know, I don't want to start changing signs willy-nilly in all of our neighborhoods. Absolutely not.
Well, I get that all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, I get, you know, constituents, well, we need this, we need that, we need this, and it's, and it's just one person, well, we, you know, if we try to appease one person, you know, we'll be, we'll have a street department really busy, and I just think we need to be a little bit cautious on that. So anyway, so I would ask for a motion that we send this to full council for approval.
I will make a motion that we send this to full council for approval.
Is that with a favorable recommendation?
A favorable recommendation.
Can I get a second?
I would second that.
I thought you might. Okay. All right, well, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's no nays, so, okay. This will be sent to the full, thank you, Officer Cantrell.
Thank you.
This will be sent to full council, recommendation for approval. And our next one is proposal B under new business, proposal number 10, 2024. It's an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a special events code. And Sharon, I understand, oh, Leondre, you're going to be giving us the details on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say thank you, Councilman Freeman, for being willing to author this city ordinance. Essentially, how, the best way to think of it, the city currently has a special events policy in place where each department head, when we get requests, each department head reviews it and provides feedback from their respective departments about what resources they will need to utilize for a certain event to happen, and we all chime in, get feedback, and that every department head signs off or are in a position to deny a request. But then also too, what this proposal here is to codify that internal policy, especially when now we're imposing fees. Currently, we do not have a fee process currently in place for special events, so, because we're dealing with money, of course, we want to make sure the common council is aware of and our attention is behind that. So the special event code aims to be a comprehensive framework for organizing a variety of public activities, whether that's concerts, festivals, community gathering, exhibitions, you name it. And, you know, it's critical for the advancement, enhancement of our culture and socioeconomic fabric. It also recognized that there are a lot of nonprofit organizations in our community, whether that's churches and different types of organization that put on regular events, and we want to be able to help them. We recognize they're invaluable to our community, and this code supports their efforts in hosting events that fund a central service, enhance the quality of life, and support businesses here in Lawrence. But also too, most importantly, why it was needed for to codify this policy is public safety. This ordinance prioritized public safety and the well-being of our residents and visitors by regulating these type of activities and events, and ensures that all events adhere to the necessary health and safety requirements and standards that we have for the city of Lawrence. What is happening is unregulated events could pose a danger to citizens and be an expense to the city resource if not registered with the city. I'm not sure if you're aware, but council, this, this summer particularly, been a number of events, unregulated events happening in the Geist area where several teenagers will take over home, and next year you know there's like 80 cars in the front lot and kids having essentially an unregulated party. This will help notify any type of act, such activity of 100 people or more, what happened that's taken place in the city of Lawrence, and it gives the city, and most importantly, our public safety apparatus, a level of eyes and notification what type of events are happening in our city. But also too, there is a financial aspect of this as well. You know, this ordinance outlines a fair mechanism for cost recovery. The code minimizes the financial burden on events organizers while maintaining and ensuring responsibility of public resources, public resources, excuse me. And most importantly as well is we want to have special events that seeks foster, dynamic, inclusive community activities where residents can enjoy a diverse experience and where residents in Lawrence can shine as a destination city. And you will also see here in the back of the ordinance as well, a fee, fee chart where these fees are fairly on par with our surrounding cities, Indianapolis, Fishers, Carmel, you name it. But also, the city felt it was necessary to decent, decentify certain unregulated events that happen in our city, but while also encouraging applicants who are of good faith to follow the city rules and policies of the city. Ultimately, we aim to promote the, the city opportunity to do, have great events in the city and to ensure public safety and the quality of life for Lawrence residents. Also too, if, Scott, if you don't mind, there are a series of amendments that we have proposed to the council, to the, excuse me, to the committee, and I have outlined those in the most recent documentation that's before you. Mr. Chairman, I believe you have one.
Maybe have one more copy with you?
Yes.
Does someone grab one in the back for me? Believe this one.
Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah, my colleague's going to bring one here for you now. And redline is some of the recommendations we made since our conversation, since it was introduced, excuse me. If you look in a couple pages back, one of the first things you'll see, and four dash two dash 11 seven of the priority of special events issuance, we want to remove the language in that section. It is subject to fewer, submitted no fewer than 45 days prior to the event. We want to remove that. Essentially, and you'll see this recurring in the amendments, that we initially made the minimum requirement to submit was 90 days, and we lowered that down to 45 days. Reason for that is we understand that, you know, events happen sporadically sometimes, and organizing events, you may not necessarily have 90 days to have all those necessary requirements to organize that event effectively, especially if you're doing advertisement. So we just want to give organizer a little bit grace. You have up to a year to submit it, and at very minimum, you have 45 days to submit it. After that, there are fees imposed as well. Additionally, you see on the next page, and four dash two dash 11 dash eight, the time for filing application for a special fee event. Essentially, in those three areas, we're going to go from 90 days to 45 days, and those three sections right there. If you turn the next page as well, and four dash two dash 11 dash 10, fees for special event permit, again, same thing, 40, 90 days to 40 days, but additionally, we have changed the additional application fee per day from $10 per day to 300 per day. And that is if you submit an application past that 45 days, depending on when your event is, it could be those $300 applied. If you, if the city approves and move forward, those are the fees that could be applied if you submit your event request after that 45 days, or, yeah, after that 45 days before the, the event. And then additionally, we did raise the vendor fees from $50 to $100, $100 to $200, and then $200 to $300. Again, that is relatively on par with our immediate surrounding cities, and we felt that was not an adverse burden to the potential vendor. If I can continue on to four dash two dash 11 dash 13, and section I, late fee application, again, it's back to that 45 days, but then we also recommended to remove, subject to denial, comma, remove, especially if the applicant does not receive approval within 45 days of the proposed event date. Essentially, it was redundant.
Which one was that, sorry?
Section I.
Okay, thank you.
And it should be redlined for you there in the comments if you don't see it. Okay. It, it's essentially redundant, since we lowered it to 45, that, that part was not necessary. And then continuing to move on, and four dash two dash 11 dash 11, special event permit administered action on application, again, reduced that to 45 days. And then further down at four dash two dash 11 dash 12, the cost recovery for special events, there's a section in A, subpart A, where it says actual expense. We want to remove that language. The reason for that is because there, there is a level of specificity to that, and it would be difficult for us to estimate the exact cost, and so that's a little wiggle room for the city to estimate the cost that would need for that cost recovery, particularly for public safety and all the potential apartments that would need to either submit documentation so they would know the exact amount for that cost recovery. So if it's okay with the council, we recommend moving that word, exact, actual, excuse me, and just say, compensate for the expenses. An additional in the cost recovery, in section two, we are adding, language, the city of Lawrence reserved the right to impose additional costs related to public safety personnel for repeated emergency or non-emergency calls that encourage calls related to manpower, vehicle use, and administrative processing in accordance with all law enforcement, Indiana laws and regulations of the city of Lawrence. So that is the addition as well, just to make sure that the applicant, if they incur a cost that is adverse for the city, that they are responsible for that, and the city has the right to impose those fees if they have multiple run calls, if their event is not defined as in their applicant and there's a situation where public safety apparatus has to show up. If it's determined by police, safety, and department of works that this organization or this promoter, this individual is not, submit their application in good faith after the fact that they could, the city has the right to impose those calls on them, especially if there's some type of emergency run that is, you know, not emergency, so one, you know, break the light hypothetic, obviously that is a necessary cost, but if there are illu activity, illicit activity that is not permitted, then yes, the city has the right to move forward with that cost as well. And additionally, and go down to section D of that same one, councilor Missouri, I know you had a slight correction as well, and section 20, and under D, subpar, section two, should the, excuse me, should an organizer previously have neglected the cleanup or repair obligation under issue permit, the city has may require deposit of adequate surety, either in cash or bond form, as precondition for future permit approval. So just a slight edit there, and I know you, you spoke to me earlier about that, if that's something that the council, I mean, excuse me, this committee will consider recommending. Almost done there, I promise. And four dash two dash 11 dash 26, on the cost recovery for unlawful special events. So any unregulated or unpermitted event to take place, we are recommending the administrative fee be changed from $140 to $500. And then at the very end, you will see a cost breakdown of all the permit fees and the changing of timeframe of when an applicant can submit their application for a special event. Again, I just wanted to stress to the council that events that done by the city or that's hosted by the city, we are partnering in that, so a lot of these policies automatically apply, except for the fees, because we are partnering, we are already using city resources and taxpayer services. These are for nonprofits, commercial, non-commercial type of events that take place in the city. We want to make sure they're regulated, and at the minimum, at the minimums, they can apply within 40, under 45 days, but there may be, well, there will be some late fees applied. And then we, again, changed the, the vendor fees, and then we amended the unlawful event administrative fee, and then of course, the late applicant fee as well. And again, these events are for individuals of 100 people or more that take place here in the city, and so we are setting up a, a way for us to communicate to a lot of our events throughout the city, who have recurring events, who want to host an event, make sure that process is publicly available for everyone as well. And with that, that's all my amendments. Unless, Scott, you have any additional?
No, thank you. That was a great summary. The only thing I would add is the version that deputy chief of staff level has presented to you also incorporates the other changes that have been provided to the council in advance of this meeting. Just to clarify, in four to 11 20 eight two, that language is in accordance with any and all laws and regulations and city ordinances. Should it be the will of the committee this evening to move this forward, you would need to take two motions. One would be a motion to amend the proposed ordinance, and then a second motion to adopt it as amended.
Well, I have some questions prior.
And I also have Captain Cantrell and DPW here able to answer some questions as well, but I'd be happy to start.
Okay. First off, this is a, these changes are going to affect any event, whether it be a birthday party at a private residence, whether it be a fish fry at one of the churches.
100 individuals or more.
Which is, that encompasses a lot of events.
Yes, but most importantly, the idea is for make sure, one, police is notified these type of events are taking place so they can dedicate a resource in, in the area, but then also, two, we don't want the situation where there are events that happen, a lot of times through social media and word of mouth, they are take place in our city limits, and a bad situation can happen. That has already happened in, in years past, certainly. You know, I'll give you an example. An individual applied for, to use one of our park facilities and said there was going to be a birthday party, and then it turned out it wasn't a birthday party, oh, it was a car show that turned out to be burnouts. Certainly, we don't, we don't want. And so this has helped give the city some framework, is a comprehensive framework for us to internally, and along with police and DPW, to have a way for us to impose some mechanisms to deter those types of situations from happening. But it can be difficult to determine, you know, if Susie's birthday party is going to turn, and next you know, 100 people is going to show up. So that's why we're trying to stay on par with relatively our surrounding cities, but then at the same time, make sure the public and public resources are protected and do our best way as a city entity to, to keep everyone safe.
This, this event you were referring to, is that, is this a recent event?
I think it happened a couple of years ago. I think Captain Cantrell can speak more of it more, but, but there are a lot of instances where that happened, especially online. Lawrence Police has, as a crime analyst that monitors social media as well, and helps us whenever those situations are happening via social media that the city is not aware of, that take place, that suddenly can come into our city, we want to be aware of that. And when those events happen, this ordinance gives us some more, some more guardrails for us to how to penalize those organizations who come out here in Lawrence and do those stuff. We're not discouraging people to, to host events here. It's just, we want them to abide by the policies laid out here that they could, hopefully this council will adopt, and also too, by public safety. I mean, there are, there are a number of circumstances that could happen. The idea is that, you know, this will give us some good guidelines.
When did the administration submit these changes?
The most recent amendments?
Yes.
Within the last 24 hours. After speaking with the team, we, we double-checked to make sure these are on par with everyone else. We initially utilized a professional service to help us articulate and give us the guidelines what other cities have done, and then of course, we put our own administrative thoughts into it, and then of course, in correspondence with the council.
Right. Well, I would turn to my colleagues on this committee, but, I mean, there's a bunch of pages here, there's a lot to digest, and I don't know that this is something we need to push through or rush through, that we need to do our diligence and do a little research and make sure that we know what we're voting on, or thoughts.
Chairman, this was in our email, so I've read this already before I got, before I came to the meeting. I did have questions, and I got them answered before the meeting, so I'm, I'm pretty okay. To what deputy level was saying about social media, like, I've, these things pop up so quickly, and I appreciate, like, I didn't, I didn't really think of it in those terms when I was reading this. I was thinking just more like, you know, the church down the street has an event, and they're just putting in some, you know, like you said, some guardrails for safety issues. I get that, but I didn't even think about all these social media events that pop up very quickly, and very often, I read after the fact that they turn, they turn sour. So thank you for that insight, because I didn't even think about that at all.
Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me, Christopher Wilburn with DPW. My colleague mentioned too, that the special event permit required authorizes DPW, the special event permit administrator, that would be me, to look at those issues on a case-by-case basis. The things you're speaking of as it relates to church, churches doing a picnic or a fish fry, we are not trying to deter the community from organizing events and events that are our. fry, we are not trying to deter the community from organizing events and events that are welcome throughout communities such as Lawrence. What we're specifically targeting are those individual bad actors who come into the city with ill intent. The reason why that unlawful fee is $500 is for that reason and that reason alone. So after we've had an opportunity to meet with the individual vendors who want to, to put on a 100 or more event, we've given them the authorization through our colleagues, police, fire, and our EMS personnel to be able to determine or ascertain if this is indeed going to be safe for our community, and once we've given the green light, then everything should be good to go. With this caveat is that if we are, if we are made aware of any ill intent or anything that is gone, unlike what has been planned, unlike what has been discussed, this gives the city of Lawrence a mechanism by which to recoup some of those costs associated with additional fire service, additional police service. So that's the whole spirit of this particular ordinance. It is not to punish our residents, nor is it to, to regulate lemonade stands, or fish fries, or church gatherings, or prayer gatherings. That is not the intent of this particular ordinance. It is simply meant to dissuade bad actors from coming to the city of Lawrence with ill intent.
I have a question. I'm sorry. Excuse, I apologize if you guys have already covered this portion, it's something I was going to ask in the other council meeting. Have we had some incidents that sparked this concern? What, what is behind the, behind this?
The urgency?
Yeah.
There is, there are, we're all, cities always operate behind the eight ball. There have been a number of incidents that we've seen in our surrounding municipalities, and it immediately comes to mind, and Leandre spoke of it earlier, was the Geist home parties, I would say. We call them spark parties, or just like raves, whatever, whatever vernacular you want to attach to it, and we haven't had the ability to reach out and penalize those individual bad actors.
Do we have that in the city, I mean, have we had an incident in the city of Lawrence yet?
Recently, and if you want to speak to that, we can, but that is the intent of why we, why there's urgency in getting this particular ordinance.
Has there been multiple incidents in this, because I know, because here's, the reason I'm saying is, I know that, like, I feel like we're behind the eight ball. I remember about maybe three years ago, the, I feel like this is an Airbnb thing, and so three years ago, there was a lot of issues. I remember Councilman Zach Addison's home, I think in particular, was shot up because of a party, but I was also told that at this time, some of that has slowed down, and part of it is because of regulations and changes that Airbnb has done in the way that they rent and lease places. This topic came up of significance recently in a conversation related to, you know, we're an event city, right? And so, I know this is 100 or more, and I'm with that, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not doing anything that, I just want to make sure that we are addressing concerns that are concerns for our city, and maybe not, that might be concerns for others, but if they're not concerns for ours, I'm always a little sketchy on preemptive stopping stuff, because Taylor, I'll give you an example, Taylor Swift concert is coming to town, that's going to generate a significant amount of revenue for folks in Airbnb, that's what this conversation was coming from. And so, and they're going to come in droves, 10, 15, 20 young ladies, this is the conversation I just was having. And so, I just want to make sure that this law does not, it gives authority, but I just want to make sure that we don't step on, you know, that we're just really mindful of how we imply it, I guess.
And I appreciate you saying that, and it, I think we're speaking the same language in the sense, too, counselor, that this is an issuance of a framework. We don't have a framework in place currently or parameters by which to operate. Before, we would send these requests through our email streams, through each individual division head, to say or yea or nay, whereas this particular framework allows us to operate within, within some sort of guardrails, in the sense that not arbitrarily saying no to people or yes to whether or not you're going to be granted a special permit, but that just gives us the opportunity, should there be any nefarious activity or any bad actors, it gives us an opportunity to recoup some of those costs associated. Did you want to say something, Captain?
I get it. So after disturbance of the peace, instead of it just being a, we're going to break it up and the officer go home, we can penalize people who have reoccurring, basically disruptions of the peace?
To an extent, yes, sir. So the biggest thing that this will, on the public safety side, is notification. So the problem is, you've said it yourself, and others have, we're behind. So when an event occurs, I have to have the resource numbers to make sure we can adequately deal with that situation. Prime example is like the burnouts. So they started on Riverside, on the west side of town.
Yes, it did.
So it filtered this way, and it happened, I believe, twice.
Mm-hmm.
On Franklin Road, in the front of the park, so we got wind of one event that was supposed to take place, and we barricaded off the park, we shouldn't have to do that, because what that does, it cuts off from everyone else that lives here in the city the rights to that park when it wasn't at dark, it was during the day, and people have this. So I believe this is more beneficial now on both sides, because for public safety, it lets us know, not that we want to stop anything, but it lets us know that on this side of town, at this time, there's an event, especially when they're blocking off streets, not necessarily for birthday parties, because everybody has birthday parties, but when you have big events, it's good for public safety to know, because a lot of times, we don't know. And that's the biggest thing that I'm looking for as far on the public safety side, is just so we know.
So it's like a block party permit, pretty much?
Well, I mean, anything, anything that incorporates whatever's, you know, set forth by the council and by DPW, I'm just saying, on the law enforcement side, it's just a notification for us that something is going on in the city.
Let's use the same scenario that you just used.
Okay.
Use the burnouts in the park.
So.
Because typically lawful, law-abiding citizens go get permits, okay? So, 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 so who would you hold, if that was, use that example, who would you hold responsible with the permit, and, you know, the, you know, who, first of all, could someone come to you, would you, they could apply for a permit to go do burnouts in the park, you know, and if we use that to penalize, who would you?
So that's a very good, that illustration, if you'll allow me, that's a very good illustration. Thank you, Captain. In those instances, this is why we have that $500 unauthorized special event. It will require some investigatory work. Obviously, a promoter was, hey, we're all going to organize, we're going to meet here, so that kind of due diligence, people don't show up spontaneously.
All the guy on the party flyers.
Yeah, if you're having an advertisement, we want to be able to pin, so these things don't happen organically. There's planning execution, what we're seeing is the execution, and then we're behind, as you stated, and as Captain stated, but the eight ball. But what this particular ordinance would allow is for the captain and his investigatory team to be able to pin a particular, you're advertising, you've got 2,000, 2 million likes, then this is your event.
So you're saying that this time, in that particular situation, we don't have a way to penalize that promoter?
As of now.
Because aren't they breaking other laws?
Potentially, yes, but that's the reason why that they're, want to set forth on having this amended and put it through, because now you have it in concrete, so to hand it to an individual that comes wants to have an event, here's the rules. You know, and there's any fees associated with it, I'm just, again, on the public safety side, we just want to know what type of event it is, when it is.
I get that, I just don't believe people are going to file for it.
Oh, I understand.
That's what I'm doing. I get that, I don't think people are going to file for it, so one of the questions I got is, let's say, I had a political fundraiser at my house, and I had 120 people, 120 adults at my house, and, but we're not playing loud music, we're not really disturbing anybody, am I in violation like the guy that's playing loud music?
Again, that's the special event coordinator and ministers' responsibility to do his or her due diligence, which is me, and.
Well, I'm saying, I'm not announcing this.
Yes, but if there's a, if there's a complaint, if there's a, if there's a public nuisance, what this is not intended to do is violate any other law that is already passed, for example, noise ordinances, et cetera. This is specifically designed to reach out and have the ability, the city has the ability then, to recoup costs that have been occurred, as, that have occurred, rather, as a result of authorized.
Really didn't answer my question, though.
Maybe if you could reframe it, I would love to answer it.
The question is, is, does the violation happen if you don't do the permit, and you're over the 100 people, is that when you violate the ordinance? Or do you violate the ordinance because you were unruly, and you had over 100 people?
So the way it's saying so, over 100 people, meaning if they had 101 people, 101 people is a direct violation of this particular ordinance, should it pass? However, if there are no complaints, there's no public notification, the neighbors have all been in agreement with this particular party, let's just say that it was Party X, then there is no violation, we haven't been made known of any issue coming. We are specifically framing this to identify people who have ill intent in the city of Lawrence.
I just don't want to, I had, I've had some homeowners associations in my time here, neighborhood, crime watch associations, who will, I could see criminal, use this to criminalize or use it as a weapon against people in the community that they don't care for, and so that's what my concern has been, because I'm the guy that's had to respond to 20 boys playing basketball at a hoop, and it became a problem, you know what I mean, Cantrell?
Yeah, and those are, those are unique situations, but they're very common.
Those are the ones I deal with all the time, the basketball hoops.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and here again, and that is not the intent of this particular ordinance, and these are very valid questions and concerns in which we digest it, too, as a team. So we discussed that very, that very thing, or what if there are 100 cars parked out, and there's an assumption that there's 100 people in a party in a home, but yet you hear no noise, there's no laws being broken, how do you handle that? They're just gathering, they're, we're not trying to restrict gathering, however, what we're trying to specifically say is here's the framework, if this is a special event.
I want, I want the 100 church people to be violated, just like I want my 100 bikers to be violated.
And why is that?
Because if it's the rule, it's the rule, because if it gets to be subjective, then it's not fair. So like me, I'm in a motorcycle club, I invite all my buddies to come over, we park all the bikes out front, and then we go in, and we go in the house, we have a party, and we're not really disrupting anything, but because I'm pulling up in bikes and all that kind of stuff, I might have a problem, where my mom's having a bunch of Jehovah Witnesses at her house, you know, for Bible study, and there's cars in the street. And it's the same problem, I just want to make sure that nobody's personal.
I understand.
Feelings, because these type of things are very rarely enforced, and typically when they are enforced, it's sometimes used neighbor against neighbor, and I'm just concerned about not causing no more drama in my neighborhood.
I understand the spirit of your discontent.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's just asking.
But I'll, I'll say this, and Leandre, I'll let you take it over. I understand exactly where you're coming from, and what we don't want to do is alienate, discriminate, and harbor ill will toward any resident. That's not something I want to be a part of, and I know this administration feels the same way.
If I, if I could take just a minute here, we got, we talked earlier about this burnout thing over at Lawrence Park.
Yes, sir.
I have it here on my phone, the, the residue on Franklin Road, right in front of the park, dated June the 7th of 2021, it's three years ago. So this wasn't recent, and far, and I know the people that live there, I know three of these people live, so they would have told me if this was a more of a recent thing. So the police was made aware of it, this, this was a, an occurrence that happened multiple times, but this happened, you know, multiple times three years ago, and the, our police department finally got aware of it and did some research on it, and found the group that was involved with it, and they got, as far as I know, is to put a stop to it. But to Tyrell's point, is, you're talking about bad actors, and I totally agree, we need to slow down or stop the bad actors, but what about, what about the wedding reception? You know, what about the, so all the churches are going to have to be made aware that if they have, well, what about Sunday, Sunday going to church? If you get more than 100 people, you're basically in violation of this ordinance, would you not be?
Well, no, no, that's a completely different, you're taking, you're taking a specific ordinance and taking it out of context, and I haven't had the ability to authenticate that, that photo, but I believe that, I believe that this particular ordinance is not meant to disrupt church gatherings, it's not meant to disrupt prayer meetings, it's not meant to.
But it doesn't say that.
To disrupt gatherings, the purpose of this.
What if prayer meetings disrupt me?
Well, the purpose of it is, and the intent of it is clear, it's a framework for the issuing of special events and permits, and that specifically is related to unauthorized parties, unauthorized events that have gatherings of over 100 or more people.
Well, wedding reception would be a special event.
I'm sorry, Counselor?
Wedding reception, would it not be a special event? It's not something that.
They get a permit for that.
Yeah, you get a permit to have those. So I think that we're, we're dancing around, and I don't, I don't, I'm not taking this personally at all, I appreciate you guys having these questions, but I think we're dancing around illustrations that have no relevancy in the sense that we're not really addressing weddings, church gatherings, prayer meetings, we're specifically mentioning people who have bad intent for the city of Lawrence.
Right.
And if we, if we frame our questions and our conversations around that particular, I think we can get more of a robust dialogue, but this appears to be a misunderstanding of what exactly the intent of, and we want to be clear that we're not regulating church gatherings or anything like that. The specific intent is to regulate those individual people who come to the city of Lawrence who intend to do ill will.
And I don't know what ill will, that's a very subjective thing, either you're breaking the law or you're not.
Well, you're breaking the law if you do, if you're, if you're doing an unauthorized party, a burnout, or you have, let's just say that somebody.
One of the number one things that loads my street up that irritates, doesn't irritate me, but it is an inconvenience, and it could irritate somebody, is quinceañeras.
Is what's that?
Quinceañera.
Quinceañeras, yeah.
In my little neighborhood, because the streets are so narrow, that their streets blocks me up, blocks driveways, blocks the road.
Counselor.
It's loud, but I'm not, I mean, seriously.
Well, my daughter had had her quinceañera, and I can assure you that the individuals who are coming to a quinceañera are filled with cash, that's a rite of passage for a 15-year-old young girl, and I doubt that people are there to, 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 again, that illustration doesn't have relevancy here.
You don't understand, you don't live in my neighborhood, what I'm saying is, you charges some of the folks in the neighborhood, I've had complaints about this. I'm not giving you stuff that I'm not, I'm just making, I'm not just making this up, I'm telling you what is going on at 46th and Shadland.
But what I'm suggesting is that if we're going to discuss specific incidents, let's do that, but generalizations aren't really at issue here. What we're really trying to discuss in dialogue is the fact, quinceañeras are one thing, church gatherings are another, these are individual people that are coming into the city of Lawrence who don't care about their streets, who don't care about our streets, who don't care about our roadways, who don't care about our intersections, and who don't care about our way of life. And the only thing that we're attempting to do through this ordinance is to create a framework by which to operate. That is the sole intent.
I get that.
So if you pass it to council, we'd be grateful, but go ahead.
My understanding is this is regulating for events, like we have the Loggers in Lawrence coming up, and we have the, we have these events. Isn't this primarily targeted just to delineate how people apply for these?
That's right.
And where they'll be located, what their hours will be?
Right.
And this is just laying out the parameters for that.
I need to, I need to put the brakes on this, because we're getting ready to run into our council meeting. I'd like to ask for a motion that this be tabled until the council can explore it a little bit more in depth.
I don't want to table it, I think it's an up or down vote, actually. I mean, you know, I actually would like to, to make a motion, I would like to make a motion to send this to full council.
I will second that.
Counselor, is that for a favorable, unfavorable?
Favorable.
Well, we're going to have to do the amendment first.
Oh, Counselor, I don't know about the amendment part of it.
Right.
Yeah, so, do you want to send it to, do we want to send it to full council? We need a motion to make the amendment.
I will make an, I will make a motion to make the amendment before sending it to full council.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, just for, because I haven't seen the agenda, is this on for the agenda for tonight?
So you, first of all, you need a vote on that.
I understand.
And then, once, if there is a motion on the actual ordinance itself, it will be moved to council.
Okay, well, let's make, let's take a vote, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now, we're going to ask for a motion that we send it to full council. Okay, now, we're going to ask for a motion that we send it to full council.
I would like to make a motion that we send it to full council. I have to say favorable or not, because...
Yeah, your options are favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation.
I would like to send it to full council with no recommendation.
All in favor, say aye.
You'll need a second on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, we do need a second, I'll second it. So all in favor of this, say aye.
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 Nay.
We have, okay, we have three to one.
Three to one.
Okay, so it goes to full council with no recommendation.
And just confirm the roll call vote, because we had a...
I'm sorry?
Because the vote was not unanimous, just do a roll call.
Oh, okay, so we have a roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Okay, and...
Wait, I'm so sorry, what?
We're having a roll call vote on this last, whether we send it to full council without recommendation.
Okay.
So are you in favor, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay, and Counselor Missouri?
Nay.
And I'm in favor for no recommendation as well. So I think we are done, and we are adjourned.